I call the meeting to order. Are you there, John?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Would you please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. We're at the approval of the agenda.
And we approve the agenda as written?
As written, okay. Is there any discussion? Can you hear me clearly, John?
Yeah, I can now.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the agenda is approved. So we are at public comments on agenda items. Do we have any, Jackie?
No.
Okay. And our student board members are not here tonight. So we'll move to board member comments. I'll let you go first since you're the newest mom.
Over, it's been a busy month for me. Aside from, you know, in terms of school board issues, I haven't been attending the levy meetings this month, but I did, I have been watching the videos and kind of following that progress and I'm excited to hear the recommendation tonight. And I did this week file for candidacy for the position, so looking forward to that.
Great.
About as much as I have.
Okay, thanks. Leanna?
Well, I as well filled out my candidacy form and it was really strange, like it looks like you're on step two of seven and then they like cut you off and they don't, you don't get to go further than that. And I'm just like, oh my goodness. But then after a day, they sent you a mail and all that stuff, so. And now I'm just getting ready for summer with a fifth grader and looking forward to sixth grade and I think I have a little bit of anxiety. My son has a lot of anxiety, so. And we'll be working with Jason to kind of get him moved forward so he's not so nervous, but I think I'm more nervous. I don't want, ah, a teenager, you know. Oh my goodness.
And Art?
All right, well first, congratulations to Arla and Leanne for signing up to run again. I know what that feels like. Otherwise, I have not gone to any meetings or anything like that except for scholarship involvement and stuff. There would have been a lot of that. And of course, this coming Tuesday, we're going to have the award ceremony, which I expect to be at, even though they're limiting how many people go there. I'm involved with the Scholarship Foundation and the Kiwanis with their scholarships and etc. And a board member, and so I don't think there'll be any problem with me being there. But I will not be presenting anything. At least I hope not. I'm sure people don't show up, but I will be. Anyway, the scholarship thing is always very interesting. And what I wanted to bring up about that is that for the Kiwanis Club, the Kiwanis scholarships will not be over with once the award ceremonies are, because there's another whole slew of kids that the Kiwanis Club will be interviewing to give, and it's not called a scholarship, an award out to, which is in honor of a former teacher here at North Mason, Gordon Montin. And these awards will go to kids who don't fill out notebooks and who don't apply for anything. I, as the committee chair, talked to key people in the schools to find out who are these kids who are not doing something traditional, like going to college, just like most kids will do, or are doing something different. And then I contact them, set up the interviews, and our chief scholarship team interviews the kids and then we select some kids to receive an award. Now initially, the award is only $500, but we have more money this year. And so we may be giving out more than one, or we may increase the amount. It depends on what the scholarship committee decides. In this case, it's the scholarship committee award part, the Gordon Montin Award. And I just thought you all should know that. One of the things that I don't think any other group does, with one exception that I know of, does a huge effort to reach out to kids that otherwise aren't going to apply or get anything from groups like that. And the Kiwanis, through the Gordon Montin Award, has been doing it for quite a while now. And I'm real happy to, happy and proud to be a part of that effort. Many of these kids will not go to college or even other schools. They might go to trade school, or they might just simply become an apprentice or something like that. And this will support them in that effort for them. Anyway, enough said on that. So that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you.
That's really good information. I love that.
Aleah, did you have a report?
I actually had something from last month that I didn't talk about.
Okay.
I think you guys know him, Emmett Bresgoreya. He talked about how student morale has actually been increasing and students seem to be enjoying their classes more, especially their CTE classes, which I think is really good to hear.
Yes.
Good.
Awesome. Thank you for that. That's, that's good news. And the only report that I, oh, John, do you have anything to report?
Uh, no, I have a, not really. I had a conversation with a constituent this morning and that'll be reflected on the agenda concerning our levy. And I am so far derelict on our monthly letter, but I still have a week to go, so don't count me out.
Okay.
I'm planning to, Dana, by phone on Monday and get that taken care of.
Okay, thank you. And for me, I have met with superintendent typically weekly. And I've also listened to the levy committee deliberations, which that group has put in a lot of time and effort on that, and I do appreciate that. And also, I've been working on the scholarships along with art for the North Mason Scholarship Foundation. And this year, we're going to be giving out about $86,000 in scholarships. So that's pretty exciting.
Wow.
Yeah, so anyway, let's move on then to the consent agenda.
The chairman and I have moved that we accept the consent agenda as printed.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Art?
Um, I would like to have just, well, first, I want to make a special comment for one of the people that's in here that, I suppose I probably don't need to name a name, although I could. But one of the persons who is going to become a para educator at Sand Hill Elementary is a former Builders Club vice president and was in the Builders Club for three years. And I'm very proud of her because now she wanted to get into elementary education and she's going to be a para educator, once we vote yes,
No.
at Sand Hill Elementary. And I don't know that it's important to name her name, but, you know, so I'll just skip that. But if she's watching this, way to go. Aside, yeah, aside, aside from that, it's always, you know, great when you are following certain kids and see the success they have after they leave school and forget all about you and that sort of stuff. Anyway, I had, would like to have maybe the superintendent just give us a brief, and it can be really brief, but the student discipline policy and the social-emotional climate policy. I read those and there's a lot of stuff that's new. And it, in some ways, isn't so new, but if you could give us, or at least for me, my sake, a little explanation of what's going on there.
Yeah, so the legislature has been paying particular attention to student discipline over the last several sessions. And so each session, they have written some new requirements and new language for school districts. And what they're really looking at this year, what the changes are getting to, is that we're, we take a really careful look at our actions in response to student behaviors that we would prefer not to see or things, and to pay attention to the disparities that might show up among groups of students. So for example, if students of color receive a higher percentage of discipline suspensions or expulsions in relation to the percentage that they are in the school community and when compared also to just the general population, then that's a problem that we need to address. And so the changes in the discipline policy are designed to help schools address those problems and to focus on making responses to student misbehaviors learning opportunities more than opportunities to get in trouble. So you still might be in trouble, but instead of getting a very negative consequence, you are getting an opportunity to improve your behaviors, so.
That was a pretty good explanation of what I thought I saw and heard there. I did like, I can't remember which particular policy it was, the language about changing discipline to something as a learning experience.
Yeah.
And as being the reason to do this stuff, not to punish, not to stigmatize or whatever, but learning experience essentially for that particular student. And I think that's a step in the right direction in any case. Regardless, there are some kids that aren't going to learn, but, you know, if we approach it that way, that can't but help.
I think there will still be reasons for which kids are suspended or even expelled, that we're going to be much more deliberate about when that is and whether, what the most appropriate response to a student's behavior is. And then the social-emotional climate is a new policy. And as a district, we've been focusing for a few years now on meeting the social-emotional learning needs of our students. This is also a required new policy, but it reflects the work that we've been doing in North Mason School District already. But now it makes it part of our policy that not only is this something that we've been trying to do because of the data that the principals and the building leadership teams have been looking at and building groups for, but that the board is making it a priority that we look at these things as well.
Well, again, thank you for that. It feels like both together, they have relationships to each other, but they're also, they're separate. But the whole idea reminds me of my perception of all things of Girl Scouting. In Girl Scouting, everything that is, has the Girl Scout name attached to it has, I always think of it as, it's a big giant hug. And in the hug, everything inside the hug, or this imaginary hug, is Girl Scouting activities, whatever. And if you do something wrong, you are part of Girl Scouts still and we're going to help you fix that wrong thing, help you get past the down thing, that kind of stuff, which is different from many organizations that don't have that, an embracing philosophy. And that's what I see this as, an embracing philosophy. It basically is saying to all of our kids, and, you know, you're part of us. And that's important. Everyone is a part of our community. And I like that kind of a message. Thank you. Let's see, other things? I don't think I had anything else.
There's a couple things.
Okay.
Yes, no, I did not.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have the Miles ABA contract. I just wanted a little bit more details on that. There was some acronyms in there that I didn't quite follow, like BCBA. So just wanted a little bit of explanation.
Um, yeah, and of course, I don't have time here to explain that to you. But the BCBA is a person who is a therapist who works with students on their behavior. And so we contract with Miles and they provide us support for the classroom teachers. And often, what happens through our contract is the BCBA or the the other support people will come in and observe this student in their classroom. And they will help the teacher build a plan to more effectively address the student needs. They will be a part often of the IEP team determining how best to serve those students. And on occasions, they will serve the student, they will come in and meet with the students individually in our school to also provide support.
Awesome. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
My other question is easier, I think. I was just looking through the personnel report and I was curious, who will be, who will be coaching girls' basketball at North Mason? Since we have a couple resignations there, I was just curious. Do you happen to know?
Yeah, I don't know if I have filled that yet.
Gotcha, gotcha.
That will be something that would be posted and then.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? All right, let's move to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I would like to note, we have a lot of very interesting things on the personnel report.
Okay.
But I do want to highlight that we have hired two very important administrative positions to replace people that were very set to move on to new experiences. So we have a new Director of Business and Finance, Yvonne Moi. Yvonne will start working with us next week so that she can do some press training with Ashley. And Rob Thomas, who has been employed in the district in a number of positions over the years, is joining us next year as Food Service Director, taking advantage of his many years of experience as a chief, master chief with those responsibilities in the Navy. So we're very excited.
And this is Rob Thomas who graduated from North Mason High School?
It doesn't say that, I don't think.
This is Rob Thomas who's been a coach and a para educator
Oh, okay.
and a teacher.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Next on the list is the levy for educational programs and operations. And this is an action item. And I did send all of you the levy recommendation and the voting results from the committee chair, who is Jeremy Hicks. So I'm going to turn this over to you, Dana.
Yes, and the outcome of this report will be that we recommend that the Board of Directors approve and adopt our resolution to pursue a levy election in the November general election. But our committee chair, Jeremy Hicks, is present, as is Jason and Slazer. And so I am going to let them discuss the work of the committee. And you have a really comprehensive outline letter telling you all of the things that the committee did. So Jeremy and Jason? Jeremy?
He's muted.
You're muted.
We don't have audio.
We don't have audio, Ashley.
I thought he just talked.
Are you muted?
No, he's just un-muted.
Oh, he's gone.
Try it again, Jeremy.
Hold on, he's gone up here.
Maybe that would, maybe that's the issue, though. Although, maybe not.
My phone is holding me up.
Can I call him on his cellphone and just put the cellphone to a speaker?
Jeremy, I'm going to call you on the cellphone.
The Jason technology.
All right, you're on the phone.
Perfect. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, but could, should we move it to a speaker?
Everybody can hear you.
All right, well, thank you, North Mason School Board, for giving me a couple minutes today to talk about the excellent work that the committee, the levy committee has done since the mid-part of January. Your superintendent and your board chair have been pretty active members in listening to what has been going on. Principal Dan King, Jason Slazer, and I have drafted a letter, which is in your board package for review, on the extent of the committee. And I think we could probably all agree that this is probably one of the most extensive committee processes that have ever, has ever taken place. And I'd like to take a bunch of credit, but really, the credit goes to the 40-plus committee members that were actively involved in this. We had at least consistently around 20 people on the committee meeting. And then a lot of people doing work behind the scenes. Let's include a whole bunch of different demographic groups, if you will. We had representation from the school district. We had representation from the barney groups. We had representation from business leaders, community leaders, citizens, parents, all sorts of different groups. And again, those are all outlined here in the letter. That's what we detailed that. From the levy committee, we held several meetings, informed three different groups. One of them was outreach group. One of them's strategy and marketing group. And the third one was a fundraising group. Within those three committees, the work was completed. We held six Zoom forums due to COVID-19 to gain solicited input from the community. Fortunately, even while those were advertised, they were not well attended. We also conducted a community survey and received over 200 surveys back with results. And those will, I'm sure those are in your packet. If not, I have the summary of those. And we asked 10 different, very specific questions, from learning loss to the support of the community to schools being a integral part of successful communities, and then supporting the levy ask moving forward. Now, of course, the caveat to that is the levy ask was not presented in there. It was just an open-ended question. About 60%, just under 60%, but absolutely or probably, which, from a levy committee perspective, I mean, there's definitely some work to do, but there's also some work that's been done by the quality of education and the quality of leadership you have within your school district. So that was a very favorable result. 200, 200 electronic surveys returned is a pretty significant amount for individuals taking surveys in the group. On May 13th, we concluded our recommendation committee meeting after several presentations from Ashley, which, a round of applause to Ashley. She has, she just filled it up. Multiple hours of questions from the committee and by me specifically on school district budgeting. And she was a very integral part of this recommendation. Anyways, on the March, or May 13th, we met and we came up with some discussions. We discussed the pros, the cons, the major considerations that were, that were thought of. The entire committee meeting were the timing of the levy, the amount, the mileage amount that need, the districts need, the length of the levy, and why the levy was needed when there may be funding options available federally and state from S or dollars. And we're going to go on to a lot more of that as we move forward with this. It has not a lot to do with the recommendation, but what I want to really hit home here is that the committee looked at that and while the general population made thinking that these S or dollars are coming in, the explanation that is presented on the school district's webpage clearly shows that those monies are there, but they're not enough to bridge that gap for the next couple of years. So the levy with a very, what I would consider conservative group of committee members was presented on behalf of the school district committee. And the committee also looked at this and agreed upon the mileage rate of $1.50 per thousand of assessed valuation for the next four years going on the November ballot. There's a resolution, I believe, in your packet to support that. Of the votes, we had, that meeting, we had a total of 18 people present for the vote after two weeks of continuous emails back and forth inviting people and encouraging the videos of that, the 40-member board. 14 were yes. We had two no votes and two were unable to vote. And that wasn't an extension, that the superintendent obviously did not vote in that. And we also had one other person that did not vote and it was due to their position. So obviously overwhelming, overwhelming yes to proceed with that recommendation. Couple things before I close tonight, I want everybody to remember, or at least those listening to consider is this $1.50 per thousand is equals roughly $3.8 million to your one. Well, as property values increase, that mileage rate decreases. So it doesn't recalculate at $1.50 every year. It will eventually go down every single year. And with the forecasted growth in increasing property values, that mileage rate will look at like $1.50 a year. But that rate of $3.8 million will be locked in for four years. So that's something the committee looked at, is securing that money, that stable funding source, but not providing, giving you means where that number will change in the four years. So really provide that security to the voter there. The other, the other big consideration here is even with the bond and the work the district has done on, on working on that bond rating and getting that down, we are still below the meeting of the districts that have levies. So this is needed. It is fiscally responsible. It is, it shows the community that the district is aware that the money is needed right now and it will be the same for four years. And it just really helps, helps the school district stabilize. In our belief, it helps the district stabilize. The other caveat with this is just remember, it is the levy. Levies are passing right now. And the Strategy and Marketing Committee has some work to do, but they're anxious to get started. So we're looking forward to a, to pass by the school board so we can start our phase two of the process, which is the vote yes campaign. I'll turn this back over to you, Jason, or superintendent, Rosa Vaughn. There's any further comments or questions for me?
Thank you. Do you have any comments or questions, board members?
Anything you'd like to ask Jeremy?
I have a comment.
Okay.
And it's probably something that he is aware of already, because, especially because Ashley was part of this. And that is, it's a particular interest of mine because of where I live, in the Tahui Forest, and of what's been going on and the meetings that I attend with the Department of Natural Resources, because so many people are not aware of this. But in any case, without having a levy, the school district is not permitted to collect its fair share of the logging revenue that comes from the states. And yet, I see you nodding, so you did know about that. But I found out when I attended, which I, monthly, they have them eight times a year or something, but I monthly attend the DNR meetings for all the forest users and stuff. None of those folks, most of them are kitsch hat people, but the DNR people themselves, who are in welfare, did not know that. And they're the ones that do the contracts for the logging and stuff like that. And they had no idea that without us having a levy passed, everyone else in the state is getting the money that more should be coming to us. And that's just a curiosity of the law. So that's, to me, a great incentive to get that out in public so that people know that no matter how good or bad the levy is, if we pass one, we will get some money that kind of really belongs to us. And if we don't have a levy, we don't get that money. Thanks.
Well, I don't, thank you, Jeremy. I know this has been kind of a long haul for you and I know that you've experienced a lot of emails and phone calls and questions and worked hard to be able to help people understand what you're trying to do, what the levy committee is attempting to do. There were, the meetings I listened to, there was some really good discussion and deliberation. And it was for both sides. It was for yes, have a levy, no, don't have a levy. There was enough, I believe, enough conversation that when you arrived at this recommendation, it's solid. So I do appreciate that. And you're not done. If we do pass this resolution, then the work really does start, as you said. So thank you very much. I do appreciate it. Did you agree to?
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh, that's John.
Yes, John.
But I presume this is the time to ask it. I just wanted, it's, I think, a point of emphasis, because I think it's been addressed, because I had a conversation with Dana this morning. I got a call from a constituent who did not, who thought that the levy did not know about the de-escalation feature, that it would go down. go down rather than up. So my point is, when we publicize this, we make, we need to make a very big point about the amount being fixed and the, you know, the adjustment being made as, you know, property assessments go up.
No, I think that's really-
Jeremy for a minute? I think he's trying to log back in.
Okay.
No, can you hear me?
Yes, Jeremy. No, John, that is a really good point. The way that you write the document, it's, we have to say it's $1.50 per thousand because that's based on the current information that we have available from the county assessor's office. But the second part of that line is for a collection of the $3.8 million, which doesn't change from year to year. So as, and there is language on page three of the resolution that states, as property values increase, that dollar per thousand rate will decrease proportionally. And so that is really important, that we emphasize that. That was something that is, remains very important to our community. And I know that Jeremy and the publicity committee are going to really focus on making sure that people hear that message.
Good. You know, I think that I, the fact that I got a call indicates community sensitivity to that. And I'm satisfied that everybody understands the importance of this. I would only add that we do have a credibility problem related to our first, you know, and perhaps even second attempts to pass this. So we really need to get out in front ahead of this particular objection, because it would be a place where talk could arise about, oh, they're doing it again.
Yes, thank you, John. Okay, so I think we're at a place now where we can consider Resolution 09G21.
That term, I move that we accept Resolution, what was it, 9-
9G21, levy 20-
9G21, yeah.
Okay, is there any more discussion?
I don't know, I think it's worth a little bit more discussion. I don't, you know, with, along the floor, I've had attended a lot of these meetings and everything that Jeremy said and everything that's been presented is, I completely agree with that this is needed, that this is absolutely, you know, critical for what we need to get done in the district. And that, and there's been a lot of work on the committee to look at this from all angles. I just, you know, I would love to hear more from this board about their feelings on whether or not we can pass it. And that's really, I think, in listening to the last committee meeting, overwhelmingly folks went ahead and proposed this recommendation. The only concerns that came up were really, can we pass it? You know, that was, not whether it was needed, not whether, you know, this was the appropriate amount or time, but do we think we can pass it? And what does it look like if we, if the district does not, if we fail a third time? That was the only hesitation I really saw from the group. And I think it's just worth a little bit more discussion before we, you know, kind of all potentially jump in.
I think with my, my comment, that something I pay attention to is that, like, the time of year we're doing it in November is a tough time for people. And when their brains think levy and they think money and they're voting on something and as soon as it passes, it happens right now and it doesn't. And I made sure to check on this. Even though it's worded in here, there's a lot of words in here and people are going to look at it and go, it's like reading the Old Testament, you know? Like, it's like, it's really hard, you know? Never mind. But the money starts coming out in April, which is a good time for most people. That's where our money, it starts getting busy. We, it's good. That's part of, when I'm looking at money, I pay taxes here and I have a business in Port Arthur, and so taxes over there. So my brain looks at all that too. But also that through the years, we've, we have been going for more before. And that was hard. But I think that what the district and the committee has done is looking at what was needed. And this is, this is needed, but this is the lowest that has been asked in a very long time. And I think that that has been looked at and said, hey, this is what we can do with. We're coming at you guys with our, this is a need. The kids are coming back to school. And I think it's responsible that we're not like, hey, we're going to go back out for that original amount and expect that everybody's going to be okay with it. I think they really looked at it, brought it down to a reasonable amount where that we could, nobody's comfortable about taxes, right? But I'm always comfortable about, I'm always going to support my locals, right? My fire, my school, my, my everything. But I think that they've really done a good job at coming to a reasonable number for everybody, not just people that have plenty of money to do it. I think everybody could look at this and go, okay, I'm comfortable. I know that my kid's in school, or even if their kid's not, the kids are going back to school, so this is, this is a need. But I think they did a good job. Everybody did a good job.
And for me, right now, it's May, and this is calling for the election in November. So there's, what, five months or something like that in order to beat the bushes, so to speak, with our message. And I think that we should make, make a point to do that, starting right now, that this is coming and all the explanations. And even if, you know, some naysayers come out there and decide to shoot bullets at it, we'll have time to respond to those bullets. And so that, that makes the November part, even though it's hard to, you know, to do stuff in November, makes it more easy for me. I don't have a crystal ball, never have had one, so I can't predict, will the, will the community support this or not? I believe they will, but I sure can't predict that. And I think because of what Leanna was saying, it's, it's the lowest amount that's ever been asked for in a long time. That's part of the message we got to get out too. So there we go.
I also, I had brought this up before, and I don't like to, like, put us up, like, look what this district's doing and this, but I like to highlight things that other districts are doing well. And I think that when we work together as districts, that we do best. And one thing that I liked seeing in another district is on their, on their Facebook page that they shared all over the place, things that the levy paid for, things that we don't get unless we have the levy, like the timber tax and that. And that was shared over and over. And I think that reached a lot of people that it wouldn't have otherwise. Like, when you put it in a newspaper or in a mailer or whatever, that Facebook, it reaches a lot of young people that are coming into new voting. And older people that, especially right now, nobody's, not nobody, a lot of people are choosing not to recommit themselves to public. So they're there too. So I think that sharing it out on our, our Facebook and what, what it is, not in a general, but like focus right down onto the things that it actually pays for, I think would help us out.
And I feel that this committee was so broadly representative of the community in many different ways. As Jeremy said, you had business people, you had parents, you had a wide variety of people. And if they feel that this will pass, that they can get this to pass, I have to have confidence in that. Because we've never had that before. We've never had a committee like this before that made such a point of dividing responsibilities and focusing totally on their separate responsibilities and then coming back together and having those discussions. So I, you know, we only lost it by 30 votes last April. And my first thought was, geez, $1.50, maybe, is that going to worry, is that going to bring back what we've lost? And I think I'm at a point now where I have confidence that this committee knows what they're talking about. And they gave it enough thought and gathered enough information that this is what they're recommending. And I, I feel like I can support that.
Yeah, I do feel like there is a, you know, thinking back to the first levy interest, you know, in the committee, when there were 40-plus people showing up who were passionate and excited, that was very exciting to see. Because, and especially in a year with a pandemic and we're all isolated and you don't really know what's going on in people's heads and how they feel about certain things, all you see is what's on social media.
Yeah.
So it was very exciting to see, like, okay, people care about the district and they're showing up and they want us to be successful. So that gives me hope. And I do think that this community does pretty remarkable things when they're banded together like that and kind of have a passion project. So, good.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to just comment, what I'm going to say goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway. The, I think our message needs to be both positive and proactive on rebutting the objections that may be, you know, that may be raised. We need to anticipate those without, we need to have the message positive, but it also needs to contain a second punch. It's like a one-two punch. The one punch would be the positive message here, all the things along the line that Arlo was suggesting and others have mentioned, the positive things that this will do. And, you know, that notion of the forest money is, is really important. I think that's a real seller. But also to anticipate there'll be those that don't get, hey, it's going to go down rather than up. And just so we cover the bases in, you know, what we, you know, what we send out via flyer information cheese.
Thank you, John. Okay, we do have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution 9G71, levy 2021.
9G21.
9G21, is that not what I said? Oh, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Jeremy, are you still there? Lost him. I just want to say again, thank you to Jeremy, to Jason.
No, I'm here, sorry.
Oh, thank, and then I'll-
I was, I was muttering so you didn't hear all my kids screaming in the background.
Well, Jeremy, thanks again for leading our work and to Jason and Dan and all of the committee that you worked with, all the great partners in our community that are going to continue, hopefully, to help us in this now that you are becoming a Vote Yes campaign committee. So thanks again.
Here, here.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Yes, go have fun being a dad.
Here you are.
All right, we're at item number four, Resolution 4G21, academic and student well-being. Yes, and when Jackie gets back to her desk, I'm going to have her pull up the recovery plan PowerPoint document that we can go through. So as, you know, was kind of referenced in the previous conversation, our district, like many other districts, is receiving some federal era dollars that are called another way Essor dollars to support learning recovery for students in our district as a result of the impacts of COVID. There is a recognition that the impacts are long and ongoing. They're not going to, we're not going to put a Band-Aid on it and fix things right away. This is years and years of recovery that you have to do for months and months of loss. It's just like when you look at child development. And the researchers like T. Barry Raiselton, who did all the work on premature children, you know, pointed out that if a child is born four months early, then they need at least four additional years to catch up with the learning, with the developmental standards that they would be. So a child that's four months early is not going to get up to where they would be developmentally and overcome any of those delays until they're at least four, five, six, is almost eight years old. And so it's the same thing when kids start to learn, you lose schooling. And it's really, we want to kind of reframe that from learning loss to schooling loss because everybody learns every day in every environment they're in. But our children have not had access to schooling in the same way or in the way that we've expected for over 16 months now. And so the responsibility for receiving the federal support is that we present a recovery plan for academic and well-being of our students. So including social, emotional, as well as academic areas of their development to our community, that this plan, it's, there's a recognition that it's in an iterative process. This is what we have right now is an outline. And as our teachers and our principals and staff continue to work, as we continue to get to talk to students who we've started to talk to, but also to teachers and staff members and parents and the community and get input as we keep this planning process going, there is a commitment to engage our community very deeply in what the plan looks like and what they think about it as we move forward. That we post this plan in, in its stages as it gets, grows and grows and grows. And the first requirement is that we have to post an initial plan by June 1st. And that this plan, and that we then have to show OSPI, that we have posted this plan, and also some initial work that we're going to do, that I'll talk about a little bit further in the plan, related to equity and looking at some of those disparities between student groups on how the, how the environment, learning environment has been impacted for them and how we're going to get, help them have equitable access to success, which really what equity means is that everybody gets what they need to be successful. So if two kids start in different places, then they're going to get different stuff to be able to succeed and that, that has to be our goal. So our responsibility is to develop a plan that targets specific and actual needs of our students so that we do ensure that every student gets exactly what that student needs to achieve success. And that would, that's our goal going forward, period. But also that's the goal of this recovery work that we're doing and that we will be able to get reimbursed for the cost of up to a certain amount from the federal dollars to help us get it done. So the first thing that we have asked, tasked our administrative teams to do, we can go to the next page, Jackie, that, yeah, is look, we have to analyze where students are from a lens of equity. And that means we have to look at all students, but we also have to look at the subgroups of students that we look at in our, in our state and in our district. You know, we have to look at, has the impact for students who are homeless been more or less? And what can we find out from looking at our data about that? For students of color, for students who are second language learners, for students who live in poverty? So we look at all of those different subgroups from a perspective of equity. And districts were tasked with designing and using an equity analysis tool that does these things, that makes us become more aware of the impacts of the COVID crisis and the impacts of what we're doing or not doing on kids every day, looking specifically at exactly who is affected and how are they and what are those impacts, communicating with our community that we have done this work and that we are going to continue to do this work and we're going to ask for their input on this as well. It includes that we reflect and starting with our, our administrative team on the data that we have, what, what does it tell us about our kids and where they are and what has happened for them? and what has happened for them? And then accountability, that we're going to report on this and we're going to tell people what we've learned and what we're doing. And we're going to keep reporting on that and we're going to keep reporting on the next steps that we take as well. So that equity analysis tool development was a really big deal. And we started, what we did was we looked at the, um, reports that we had to do during the CPR, um, you know, that we do every five years with our, our federal programs on, on equity. And we started with those and built our tool from that. And so the next slide just shows you part of the first page of one of the, the school's reports. But we've created a tool, it will be available, it will be, all of our reports on some of these tools will be posted. People will be able to see, we'll, we'll do summaries because it gets pretty long, but we will be posting a summary of our equity analysis along with this initial plan document on our website as part of our responsibility to the community and to receive the ESER dollars and to, um, for accountability for us with the state and with our community. All right, so our academic and wellbeing recovery plan has eight parts. And so there's an actual planning document that I will be submitting to OSPI that says our LEA, we are an LEA, a learning organization. So what is our basic information? We are North Mason School District, et cetera, et cetera. Our addresses, our schools. Then there's attestations and public postings. On the document, I have to say, yes, we created a draft plan and we posted it. Here's the link. Yes, we started the equity analysis, we posted where we are so far, here's the link. We have written a new, and the board is adopting hopefully tonight, an equity policy. And here's the link. So all of those things are part of that attestation part. Then we talk about what are the universal supports that we are going to ensure are available for all students? And then what kind of diagnostic assessment? The state, because it came from the federal, um, ESER staff, talked about assessments as diagnostic assessments. So we have to talk about our assessments as diagnostic assessments, even though we are not psychologists, we are not qualified to diagnose. They're screening assessments, but for the purpose of this report, they're classified as diagnostics. But they're screeners. And then we're going to talk about how we're going to engage student and family voice as we go forward and what strategic supports we're considering right now. And as we get closer to the start of the year, that will firm up and we'll be able to say, these are the supports that will actually be in place for individual students, for identified groups of students, how we are going to monitor that progress. And then other supports for strategy, strategies and interventions. And that's really supports for the district. What do we need to get these things done? Okay, next one. So we're going to engage voice from students' family and our community partners in a number of ways. We've already started conversations with student leaders. I brought this information to the Monday, Tuesday group of ASB at the High School of Student Leadership a week ago. And we're going to meet again this coming Monday to talk a little bit further about what else we know so far. And had really great, we talked about some of the big ideas and where we were going to go looking at supports for kids. And some of the ideas that we're, we're looking at expanding on and putting in place for fall came from that initial conversation with our student leaders. So that's really exciting. We did academic and wellbeing surveys that came from OSPI that we sent out to sixth through 12th grade students. We had understood, all the districts understood, we would have those results back by now. We don't, but when we get those back, we will be sharing those. We're, we're looking at some new tools that will help us broaden our conversations. One of those is a tool called Thought Exchange that all of our partners in Kitsap County have been using, many of them for five or six years. And it is a really cool way for us to be able to do forums that are much more engaging and interactive than just like me talking and people writing questions in the chat, but very interactive. But also to get interactive information by sending out emails. And the way that Thought Exchange works is it develops a conversation, whether it's in a forum or in an, you know, sending out an email and people responding to the, to the tool in the cloud. So in Thought Exchange, we send out an open-ended question. So for example, an example I saw in the training was a school district in, um, upstate New York who was considering putting armed, um, armed officers in the school to protect children. And so they asked a question, they said, the question was very simple. How do you feel about having armed resource officers in the school? Well, from that question, they got thousands and thousands of responses because the way Thought Exchange works is we ask an open-ended question and somebody puts in an answer. Well, I think it's a good idea because, or I don't like this because. Then all the other people that are viewing the Thought Exchange, they get to rate. It's all anonymous. They don't know that it was me or you or whoever put an answer in, but they get to give each answer one to four stars. And they also get to comment on that answer or to add their own. And then this really cool tool analyzes all of this information and gives us a very complete picture of the frequency of responses that people had, what those responses were, what most people believe, what the underlying things are. Gives us a very complete picture of the responses from our community and gives us a report that our community can look at it. And then as a community member, you look at that report and you, you're wondering, well, how much did people actually think about guns? For example, in this example, they can put in a keyword guns and they can see all the responses that people wrote that had that word in it. So it's very detailed and very in-depth. And it will allow us to really get, I think, um, a level of feedback from our community we haven't had the ability to collect before and also to be able to share that with our community. So I'm really excited about starting to use that tool. Panorama is another tool that we're looking at that particularly is more focused on talking to kids about social, emotional, how they're feeling, certain issues, and collecting some data that can be used. It also is a tool that can, um, collect all of the other data. We already have all of our test scores and grades and attendments and put that in a very clear, simple way that makes it much easier for our teachers and to talk with each other, to talk with students, to talk with parents, to talk with community about what we know about our kids and what we need to do better for them. So those are tools that we're looking at adding to help us do this work better. And then we'll have other forms and versions of conversations with our stakeholders as, as we, as schools open up more and we get to do other things. Okay, next. So right now, you know, we have to start with what are the universal supports that we know we're going to offer for people? Whoops. And we have been building our multi-tiered systems of support in our district for four years now. We'll continue to build that and to get better. We'll look at high-quality tutoring and having that available, guaranteed and viable curriculum, differentiated instruction, class-wide interventional strategies, additional instructional time. We're going to look at extracurricular activities and relationships for building wellbeing, inclusive and positive school environments. How do we get, grow in that area? How do we develop places that are comfortable socially, emotionally? And access to additional behavioral supports or to behavioral supports. And we're going to do that in a number of ways, but probably a big, we considered, um, summer school programs and we looked at summer school programs and we looked at the success of summer school programs in our community over the years. And we determined that although we were considering that at the beginning, we determined that we're going to probably focus our efforts on extended, extending our learning day or extending our day to provide opportunities for kids, whether they are extracurricular or academical support opportunities, but to add those on to the beginning or the end of the day, depending on the grade level, and to provide really comprehensive, deep levels of support that we haven't had in those areas using our ESER funds. And so we're really excited about that. So some of the assessments that we use right now, we have a number of assessments. And as we fill out the report for the state, we have to include all of this in, in the report. But FAST comes from FastBridge and it's, it's tools that we've been using the last couple of years, K-8 to do some academic assessments in math and reading. And they are nationally normed and they give us really good information on exactly where holes might be for our kids that we can address. Fanta's and Penel, we use K through two, that's, that's our reading curriculum. And it also has nationally normed assessments that can help us in a very diagnostic way. Smarter Balance Assessment gives us some data. The COGAD is the testing that we do to place students in our Gifted and Talented Program. It gives us some information. The ELPA 21, which is our assessment of second language learners and their growth as English language learners, gives us some information. WALKIDS is a tool that we use with kindergarten students. It gives us information. WIDA is a test that we do with some specific kids with special needs. We look at grade distribution at the high school. We look at classroom formative assessments and teacher recommendations. In the wellbeing area, we look at the SABERS, which comes from the FastBridge tool. But this is a test that we have or an assessment where kids get to talk about how, what, where they feel they are in their social, emotional behavior, wellbeing right now. And where adults also get to give information about those same students. We have a number of the COVID-19 supports and testing of the things that we're going to be able to do, the student survey, the healthy use survey. So we have lots and lots of different ways that we can assess and measure whether we are effective or not. And for example, if we, if we adopt this panorama tool, it will be able to suck all the information out of all those tools into one document and help us with, help us look at things. Next. So we're going to, once we, we do what we're going to do for all, then we have to figure out who needs more. And we'll do that through survey data, through student voice data. We'll do that through our assessments. We'll use the information we get from our equity analysis tool and from our MTSS problem-solving process where our teachers meet in groups and look at student needs and student performance and, and identify things that need to be addressed. Okay, next. And we have a lot of different things that we're going to look at for support strategies. And like I said, we're in the beginning stage of determining what these are. But we're, how do we accelerate student learning? Because we don't fill holes, we accelerate students. We look at where their strengths are and build on those to get them to where they need to be in meeting all the standards. Using the inclusionary practices, so students do with, um, who are coming from different places where they start always do best when they're in a classroom with a variety of students with other different levels and abilities. So making sure that that's part of who we are. Strengthening our multi-tiered systems of support, increasing access to school-based counseling, English language learning opportunities, supporting those students at the secondary level who came out of this last 16 month with number of incompletes or Fs and need, need to get those cleaned up on their, on their transcripts. Adding extracurricular activities to address the social, emotional need. You know, one of the things we're talking about with the summer school slash after-school programs committee that was meeting yesterday is expanding things like maybe having a running or a track program at the elementary school for all kids instead of, you know, to build on the success of things like girls on the run and making sure we find new ways to engage our parents and our families in this process. Next. And then we will use the assessments that we have to monitor student process and then, or progress. And then we will use our building and district leadership teams to analyze the data using the PLC times in the buildings to analyze the data. Make sure that we've calendared when we're going to look at data at least every six weeks and how are we going to address and change and what that process will be looking like. Okay. So phase one, we're coming up with our immediate and short-term strategies and interventions, building into a fall effective concrete learning plan that gets us through, that we will be starting over the summer, we'll be developing that first phase. We'll get it started. We'll take a look in November about how are we doing? What do we need to adjust? And we'll take a look again throughout the winter, probably again in January and February and then again in April. And how do we build going forward and sustain changes in our educational process to meet the needs of all kids? And to do that from an equity lens of how do we make sure that each student gets exactly what they need to be successful? Not all students getting the same thing, but each student getting their needs met.
So do we have any questions? I guess my first question is the Thought Exchange that you were talking about. Is that, is that coming to people in a browser or how does, how do you?
It's a cloud-based tool. And so what we will do is we will be able to send out the questions and people will be able, because it's cloud-based, you can access it through your phone or through your computer or whatever device you have to be able to get on and, and put your.
So everyone would need to be part of the email system or the communication system?
Yeah, but we can send that out, you know, we can send out the questions and how to get involved and how to be involved through our phone calling system that goes out.
Okay.
So we can share with everybody and then from there.
Okay, my other question is, all of this information will have to be monitored or coordinated by a district office employee or would that be?
Our admin team.
The admin team for each building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then we will, um, we will be regularly addressing it as a group at our, at our instructional leadership meetings.
Okay.
So a question related to what Laura brought up with the Thought Exchange. Will there be, and is it able to handle issues that are school-specific? That you only want to get school, parents and people involved as opposed to community-wide things?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question about.
Anybody can, can buy, buy licenses and use it, you know, community organization, like the county could do it, a business can do it, can be part of Thought Exchange. But ours is about school.
Right.
My question is about timelines. So, so there's this equity analysis tool and then there's the plan as a whole. And you mentioned submitting to the state and, you know, so, and I was looking at this next steps timeline. I guess I'm a little bit confused as to how it all sort of tracks. You know, when are you, you're submitting a sort of preliminary plan to the state and then these, this is how it's going to get.
You're submitting to the state frankly, a checklist that says, yes, we've considered and all these things and building our preliminary plan. They don't really.
Want to see the actual plan.
No, we just want to check some boxes.
And when is that checklist due to them?
Due, June 1st.
Okay, that's what I was understanding.
Which is, which is part of the issue, you know, to do all this work.
Right.
And to talk to the community, we have to submit this checklist before we get to have those conversations.
Right, right.
So that's why some of what I'm saying is extremely broad because it will narrow down over the summer as we talk to the community and are building our plans for next year because people will tell us some things.
And this plan is a prerequisite before we get any ESER funds?
The June 1st, we've gotten our ESER 1 funds, we've expended those. But we've received part of our ESER 2 dollars. But to receive any of our ESER 3 dollars, we have to make this June 1st submission.
Okay, just the June 1st submission.
Yeah, the rest of this, we're, we're committing by making this submission that yes, we're going to do this work, but.
There's no one from the state following up trying to see if we've done it? That's what, okay, thank you.
Well, it's a great plan. And I believe it's in the best interests of our students to follow through and, you know, use all of those tools that you've put into this plan. It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work.
And then it, you know, it sifts down to.
And then it, you know, it sifts down to the building principals to make sure that it's happening in the building. So I'm hoping that it's successful.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion for Resolution 4G21?
If you don't, I will move that we approve Resolution 04G21 on academic and student well-being.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes?
I do want to say, obviously, I will be reporting to you regularly. I will be focusing the academic reporting that we already do as part of our ease, as part of our policy governance on this work. And I, we, I am, I do have later in today's agenda a recommendation for an equity policy within our policy governance group of policies that I will also be then regularly reporting them.
Okay, good. All right, we're at Item 5, Resolution 5G21, delegating authority to WIAA. And I guess we need to, do we need to have a new WIAA person?
You, you need to at least name and elect.
Okay.
If it's going to remain the same person, that's fine.
Are you that person right now?
Yes.
Um, I think so.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and you're also our, our ledge rep, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so would someone else like to step forward for delegating, for our WIAA representative?
This is the athletics.
What does it involve or entail?
I don't think there's any meetings. I believe that it's more just an informational.
It's a lot of just emails and information and it's stuff that we usually cover and see already. So it's not, not.
A lot of may make changes to the.
And you give a bit on the changes that they want to make to the rules and that kind of stuff for athletics.
I think it's a two-year commitment unless you decide it's not something you want to continue and then we would just.
Do we review this resolution every two years?
Every year.
Every year, okay. Are you happy with it, keeping it or?
If you would like to do it, it's, it's worth, it's like, because it's not like, I know you're brand new, so if you're gonna jump in and take something, this would be a really cool one to take because it's not like jumping into a pot of fire.
There aren't meetings that you have to attend.
I would be happy to take, to take it on.
Awesome.
Very cool.
So let's see, we probably, we can just name her as the board member contact, okay?
Yes.
But we do need to have a resolution adoption, so can I have a motion to that effect?
I move that we, that we adopt Resolution 05G21, delegating authority to WIAA.
Okay, is there any, any discussion? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. And now we're at superintendent update.
Yes, and we are going to turn it over to Ashley to begin with for our.
All the many things she has to talk about there. I'm wondering if we should go ahead and let Joan do the capital projects even leave?
Yeah, yeah, let's, Joan's here and so let's, is that's okay with you, Ashley? Joan, would you like to talk about our, where we are on all our facilities?
Sure. So we're done with our girls softball field. It looks awesome. They've done a wonderful job playing on it. So we're getting, we're closing that project and we're in the process of closing our stadium project as well. We are complete with the fellow capital projects. We have finally closed that. And the other project that is in, is that a stadium? We're in the process of closing the high school and the middle school. We're doing the final paperwork in all those capital projects so we can get them settled up. So once we get our information from our architect to close off, we'll have everything in line. And by, hopefully by the end, the, starting of the new year, a school year, all our capital projects will be in line closed.
Awesome.
Joan has been just a true woman, working so hard in so many ways this year. And unfortunately, she's also had to address things with our facilities. We've had some vandalism and some things that she's had to work with. For example, there was some recent damage to the brand-new press box and Joan did an amazing job of getting folks out here right away to take care of that vandalism. And I want to thank her for that. But also, she has really been the lead in ensuring that we are in compliance with all of the health and safety things that we need to do during the COVID pandemic. And she has been our number-one liaison with Peninsula Community Health in our efforts to allow them to ensure and provide a vaccination clinic at the, at their site here on campus. And I just want to thank Joan because her work often goes unnoticed and unrecognized and she has been such a backbone of the district throughout this year.
Well, thank you from all of us too. And I think maybe a round of applause would be. Thank you, Joan, we do appreciate it.
That stadium situation, they also stole almost $20,000 worth of equipment.
Oh my gosh.
Oh my god.
It was a blow.
We're in line, we got right on top of it so we can have everything ready for graduation.
Exactly.
Did we catch them?
No.
Oh.
It's still processed, though.
Oh.
Yeah.
Now, unfortunately, we weren't allowed yet because of the getting approvals through the county on the finished projects. We were not yet allowed to have put the cameras in the, in the room, in there if the county had finished that approval.
Oh. Wow.
Once we can't, once it's turned over to us, we can change and add. But because county, we can't add anything. So they're working on trying to.
We should have everything ready to go, right? That's been a priority.
Everything's coming hopefully in tomorrow. So I'm.
Oh, excellent.
Company.
Yeah.
And everything's coming. And our Dectonics laptop, which controls our scoreboard, was stolen. So that's already here, we're getting it reprogrammed. We got on top of it.
Good. How sickening.
Make sure everything got in right away.
What a, what a gut punch.
Yeah, unfortunate.
To the whole community. I just hope the people, I mean, I know they don't even care and because they got what they wanted, but that really sucks, you know? That's terrible.
Well, thank you, Joan, for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you very much.
And back to budget and money and everything.
Yay.
Okay, so we'll start with the other funds. Capital projects again, just like Joan was talking about, we're in the process of closing out a ton of projects right now. But on the close-out phase, there's not a lot of value is coming out of the fund because the work has been completed. We're in the paperwork stage. So we have little things here and there, nothing major. And then Joan, Dana and I are meeting to discuss potential projects for that half-million dollars to release, stretching to the most good in the district with that kind of money that we have there. With some of the revenue issues in the general fund side, that will really help offset the cost of helping maintain the facilities in the coming years. So, yeah, we're just over half million dollars there. Debt service, we had our, our bond levy collection in April, which is why you're seeing it jump like that. Unfortunately, I have a bond payment due on June 1st, so you're going to see that drop right back down. So there's enough money in the fund though currently to cover our 2013 bond payments. So ASP, we're currently sitting right around 399,000. I don't expect a lot of activity in this fund here through the rest of the year, given the current situation. Transportation vehicle funds, again, this is another one, we're not going to see a lot of movement until August, when we're going to get approximately $125,000 in depreciation payments from the state on our buses that are currently on the state depreciation schedule. So that's where we're sitting for our other funds. We did see a little bit of movement in enrollment this month. Normally, this is the timeframe where we start seeing our enrollment decrease through the early graduations. We actually saw it increase by about two due to the, I believe it's due to bringing back the rest of our K-12 kids. So we did see it increase a bit there. Again, you're seeing that that orange trend line is where we should have been and that blue is where we currently are, which is what's helping with some of the revenue issues that we talked about in the past due to not receiving those state funds. So next, do you want to go to the dashboard?
Trying to navigate.
So revenues, we're currently trending a couple percent under, which is actually really great considering the $3.8 million of lost state revenue. So the fact that we're only about 2% under is good. Local sources, again, that purple semicircle is going to be completely off because our trend is based upon four years of data. And this is our first half of the year without levy collection. So it thinks we took in a lot more than what we actually took in based upon past year trends. State sources, again, this is where we're seeing that deficit. We're currently sitting at about 49, or 59% of what was budgeted to be collected in, based upon historical trends, we should be closer to 68%. Federal sources, this is how we're, we're bridging that gap. You can, a lot of our federal money actually gets collected during summer months. And you can see that we're already sitting at almost 88% there, when year-to-date, we should be closer to about 61%. A lot of that's due to a lot of the claim work that's going into getting these federal dollars in the door to offset our revenue losses. So we have a good starting fund balance for the fall. One of the things I actually, I'm in the process of working on the budget for next year. And one of the things while I've been going through all of the data that I also noticed, are, you were talking about the lost state forest revenue due to the lost levy. One of the other things I noticed, and it completely slipped my mind, we're also not collecting local non-high payments. These come in from our local school districts that some of their high school students over to our district because they don't have a high school. We normally collect anywhere from $175,000 to $200,000 a year. And when the spring rolled around and I got a statement with $0 on it, it clued in, yeah, we're not going to be collecting it. So here during the budgeting process, I'm having to budget $0 for state forests going into next year and $0 for non-high. Those two items combined on the conservative side is a loss of a half-million dollars. If you're trending it out, it's a loss closer to $850,000 to $900,000. So combine that with the lost 4.6 million in levy and then the lost state revenue and that's, the combination is staggering.
So the reason for not being able to collect the non-high stuff is because it's remote, right?
No.
No, it's because we don't have the levy.
They pay us a portion of what we're losing out on those levy dollars by having.
So it's just like the forest dollars then?
Exactly.
Wow.
Yep, handed in.
Oh, we need to get that out too.
One to add to the awareness pile. Yep.
Okay, so expenditures, that green semicircle, again, that's the one that I watch super closely. We need that closer to 10% by the end of the year. We need 10% in fund balance before August 31st to get us through a fall of no local levy collection. Right now, we're currently at about 6.8%. I'm working on bridging that gap right now through the ESAR 2 collections like Dana was talking about earlier. It is a very exhaustive process. Because the funds were released late in the year, we're having to retroactively go back through hundreds of invoices, recode and make sure they're allowable. And we've met all federal requirements before I request the grant claim, while she risks an audit finding in future years. So it's, it's a little bit slower of a process than I was hoping for, but at least we're doing it the right way. Total expenditures year-to-date, you can see here, we're trending a little over 5% under where we would normally be at this point. Again, that's because of our conservative spending approach to ensure that we're offsetting some of our lost revenues. So it is a benefit, we made this last-minute request going into the school year based upon the reduction of student HPE and what we knew would be impacted to our revenues.
I'm still unmuted.
Our basic education actual year-to-date is trending about 4% under. Again, that's conservative spendings that help mitigate the lost revenues.
I'm doing a report.
John, you need to mute yourself.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So our, our total expenditures that we normally spend in our top 10 programs, as you can see in that little table below, that's currently making up about 80% of our spending. Again, these are things like nutrition services and our transportation. Technology has been a big one this year. And then obviously, a title one since we gripped our teachers into a school-wide plan in order to be able to utilize our federal funding to help offset costs. So the next slide is our month-end and year-end fund balance trend. That solid blue line is our current year trend. Again, like I agree, every month, we're trying to get it to that green triangle, that's on the very far right-hand side, that's where we need to be by year-end. It's slowly moving up, which is what I would anticipate over the next few months. I'm going to be working with my replacement on continuing the work I've been doing to help bridge that gap so that you guys are there by the end of August. And then the next one, so this is a more detailed idea of where our revenues and our expenditures are coming in. And this is one that I really like to look at on a monthly basis because it shows all of our different revenue areas where we're technically in the hole. These are areas where, based upon past trends and budget, we should have more revenues on those areas than what we actually do now. We've lost about 3.152 million in just state general apportionment dollars. That's sort of that larger number smacked out in the middle of, top of the revenue section. And then the, what they consider the special purpose unassigned, it's that $875,000 negative number you're seeing there, that goes hand-in-hand with our general apportionment. That's like loss of CTE revenue and other specific state categorical funding that we're not receiving. And then below, you can see the areas that where we currently have what would technically be considered overspending in our expenditure side. So these are areas that technically we hadn't budgeted to have expenses or we had budgeted for a lower amount and then it had to be revised and we're spending more. These are things like our remote learning environment. The budgets have been completed prior to the state really having a plan on what schools were going to look like come September. And so we weren't anticipating such a large move to a remote environment. And so right now, we're currently about $245,000 over what we had budgeted in that area. But you can see we've saved $631,000 on the basic education side. And then we have about $147,000 overage in our state lab allocation, so our learning assistance program. When we have decreased enrollment, one of the things that we have found is the needs of our students in a remote environment actually increased. And so although they are not physically present in school five days a week, their, their needs actually increased, more so than what we had seen when they were here all the time. So we are seeing increases in certain expenses based upon that. That's all I have on the general fund side. Questions, comments?
Will you be, you're obviously going to be working with your replacement, but will we be seeing this?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm training her on the use of the software and I've already reached out to my contacts at ForecastVibe to ensure that she's going to have a rep working with her to also train her with. her when I'm no longer here. I'm hoping that next month, I can sort of give her the leads to present based on these, and I'll just sort of be sitting here to fill in any gaps and help her out along the way.
Great. And there's also an item here, USIP insurance provider?
Yes. Okay, awesome. So I'm actually excited to talk to you about this one. So our, I'm sorry, I know it doesn't sound super exciting, but I'm excited. So we currently have liability insurance. All school districts are obviously required to carry clearly significant insurance policies. Sorry, this is a really bad copy, just... But we're currently with the Washington State Risk Management, full WSRP. About two and a half years ago, I saw some financial concerns in WSRP's books, and I decided to, you're hardly two and a half years' notice, even if you're going to shop around for quotes. So two and a half years ago, I gave notice, and I am so glad I did because we have been, we have been facing back-to-back-to-back 20-plus percent rate increases since we joined them.
Holy shit.
And so we went from having premiums that were, for an entire year, $198,000, to now we are close to half a million dollars. And they have announced another 20% rate increase going into next year. So I shopped around, and I have signed a contract to move the district over to Clear Risk. You guys were with them prior to me starting here. And I locked in a $100,000 rate savings going into next school year and an additional $100,000 rate savings going into 22, 23.
Thank you.
So that's going to be $100,000 savings over the course of two years, potentially more because we don't know what the insurance market's going to do in 22, 23. But that's based upon today's rates. So I just wanted to be able to, one, notify you guys that we will be changing for our insurance, and then also bring forward the savings that we will be seeing on that side.
Awesome. Good job.
Yeah, fantastic.
Wow.
Yeah, here, here.
Okay, so then this was going to, this, I tried to get this to come out better. It's a really horrendous copy. But what I, what this is, is it's a snapshot from the OSPI State Multi-Year Funding Tool. And so it goes through all of the state categorical programs and general apportionment programs that we get funded for, and it shows you where you're at in the current school year. And then it gives you three other maintenance level budget, house budget, senate budget. Those don't matter because those weren't what was signed. What was signed was the enacted budget. So they almost put those on as a teaser, as in like, the senate budget would have passed, you would have gotten this much more, but no, you're not. So with the enacted budget, we can go through and compare line by line where our deficits are going to be next year and where we'll see revenue increases. That first line where it says apportionment and it says does not include CTE, I promise that is what it says, even though most people aren't going to be able to read that. We're seeing a $600,000 increase from 2021, current school year, to next year. The issue is, is they gave us an increase in our general apportionment, and then every single one of our categorical line items, they've decreased. So in reality, that $600,000 is gone after the decreases in all those areas. But one of the things that they did do is we did get the transportation stabilization.
All right.
Yep, that transportation stabilization is bringing in $405,000 to this school year. Now, this isn't extra money. This is money that's going to make it so that we can fully pay all of our transportation expenses this year. And then what they've also done is allotted about $664,000 of what they're considering stabilization into next year's budget. So because the RCW was not changed during the legislative process to recalculate the formula that's used to fund transportation, what they've done is said, we're going to top you off to what you should have gotten in 1920, and the difference between what your expenses are in the current year and 2021, and what we're going to give you based upon your 1920 accounts is going to be considered stabilization. So we're going from 1.6 million from this year back to our 2.11 million dollar budget. It will get us closer to fully funding transportation next year. The district will still be short potentially $200,000 to $300,000 because of the increased fuel costs that we're all seeing right now. Obviously, when you have a fleet of buses, that's a lot of money. But we're not looking at a $1.2 million deficit, which was what our fear was in the beginning.
Awesome.
So...
That's really good news.
It is, it is really good news. So basically, once you get down to the bottom of the table, what you're basically looking at is the fact that our revenues this year are going to be comparable, our revenues this year are comparable to what they're saying our revenues are going to be next year. Other than the fact that with the lost levy, we collected 2.1 million of levy this year due to the October collection from 2020. We don't have that for next year, and since we don't have a past levy, you can't budget for it. So we will see about 2.1 million in lost revenue in the budget due to that. So we're trying to compensate that, compensate for that through the budget process and be able to offset some of our expenses that we can legally offset with S R 3 next year. We're trying to do that. Issue is, we don't know when S R 3 technically will be released. So hopefully, after our plan is submitted, we can get some type of timeline because that will be needed.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Well, thank you again for all your hard work. You are really appreciated.
Yes.
Yeah.
So now we are at the teaching and learning update.
Yeah, and I just wanted to highlight a nice report one of the teachers sent to us so that, or two of the teachers, so that you could have it, and we included it in the board packet. And our eighth-grade humanities students, for a number of years, have been participating in Capital Classroom. And the teachers sent some information and a link to our kids and their connections this year. So the work that they were following was making Juneteenth a holiday, which did happen in our state concerning menstrual project products in schools and concerning school-based health centers. So there was work done that was successful on each of those areas to different degrees during the legislative session, and I'm really proud of them. And I think if you want to just click on the Senator Wellman's remarks about the kids there at the bottom of the page, then we can share that.
Yeah.
Hold on. Just a sec. I knew you'd be particularly pleased with this report, John.
Yeah.
Support for TVW's web services provided by the Washington Association of Real Service.
Hears. I've received the constitutional majority, gross of 73,73,73's amendment is declared pass, title of the, title of the year. Senator Wellman, state your point of inquiry.
No privilege, Mr. President.
State your point of personal privilege.
Thank you. You know, it's been challenging, many challenging things that have taken a toll during this pandemic, but it has been... There have been some highlights, and one of them is I'm sure the increased audience of TVW. And I can tell you, Mr. President, that in fact, the TVW Capital Classroom of eighth-grade students from North Mason Middle School are watching the passage of the bill we just passed. Those students have participated, all sexualities, all students have participated in a red lighting campaign in support of this bill. So I hope that they enjoy their lessons of civics and have watched us on TVW. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
President, I'd like to point out that's not technically a point of personal privilege as opposed to that with TVW, I let it slide this time.
So our kids did a great job.
Wonderful. I just love hearing that. I'm glad you shared that with us. Make lemonade, but all you got is lemons. I think that's just a great plus for civic participation.
Well, it is. And that particular bill ensured that all students will have free access to menstrual products as needed in all schools in our state.
That's awesome.
That was really cool that our kids worked on that.
Very.
Okay, and we've already had the capital projects report, so now we are at upcoming board letter columnists. And May is, John, you have 11 days.
Yeah, I'm counting them down. I've made an appointment with Dana for Monday, and I should have this out Tuesday.
Okay. Leanna, you have June.
Yeah, and a topic would be helpful.
It might be really nice to coincide that with the press release that we're going to do on the savings on the bond for our community, and you could work with Ashley on that?
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, that would be a really good one.
Yeah, like, I want to do it like in your face, like...
Yeah, no, that would be a great one.
I know we got mixed up last time, and this time I'm, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, I have July, and Ila, you have August. So now we are at assurance of organizational policy monitoring reports. I don't believe we have any. We discussed the district calendar last month. Is there any additional discussion or comments that anybody has? Okay, so we are at adjournment. Going to be ordered, a board and superintendent. Do any of our board members or the superintendent or our student board member have any additional comments?
I will be bringing a new E policy to you in June that is our equity policy. It is very long and extensive, and the things that we're going to require, be required to report on are pretty, pretty in-depth. So I will want to meet with you, Board Chair Bode, to decide what month we're going to place those reports in so that when we bring it to the whole group, you guys will be ready to accept that policy and allow us to include that.
So that needs to be included in your report that's going to the state?
No, it doesn't. It just will need to be posted at some time.
Okay, all right. Okay, the board self-assessment of the meeting is Director Croster, Crutzer?
Crofton.
Yeah.
So our general meeting behavior, I guess I can go through all of them, even though we do every single time. But the agenda was well-planned, and the board followed the agenda, and board members prepared for and contributed to the meeting. The meeting proceeded without interruptions or distractions mostly, and the board's deliberations and decision-making process were public. Participation was balanced, all participated, no one dominated. Members listened attentively, avoiding side conversations, which I think some of our side conversation, it wasn't side, it was melded together wonderfully. And work was conducted in an atmosphere of trust and openness, and meeting participants treated each other with respect and courtesy. And I think that we are satisfactory and wonderful in our general meeting behavior and our governance principle review, where the board actions occur at the policy level rather than at the operational level. The board, the board reviews policy about each topic before discussing that issue. In writing additional policies, the board starts with a broad statement and becomes more detailed, and this is the one that we N A usually, I'm just going to do that before I go on. The board minimizes time spent monitoring past performance. The board routinely dedicates time to reviewing, improving its own process, and clarifies properties, values, when considering potential outcomes, beneficiaries, and cost of outcomes. The board follows an annual calendar based on a plan for doing its work, and helps, the board chair does wonderfully in helping the board efficiently conduct its meeting.
Here, here.
Here, here. And the board spends most of its time deliberating issues, defining and clarifying its vision and linking with its community, which I think so much, we've seen amazing work at this meeting with the levy and everything of working with the community. It's been wonderful to see. As opposed to fixing things, and the board supports the superintendent in any reasonable interpretation of its policies, and I believe that is satisfactory overall. We are satisfactory. And I put up here the members that were present. I put four plus one per telecom. One of there.
We do have a sign-in sheet here that if you have not signed in, it will be appreciated as part of the protocol for the COVID pandemic. So if you haven't signed in yet, please do that before you leave. We're going to adjourn into executive session right now for about 45 minutes for the purpose of evaluating the superintendent's performance during the 2021 school year, and no action is expected as a result of this executive session. We'll meet in approximately five minutes.
I hope I'm not forgotten in the process.
No, we're going to, we're going to get you in there, too, John.
Okay, Lloyd.